With the team and Justice Crowell.
Welcome, everybody, to the August 5th Board of Selectmen meeting. On our agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, a public hearing at 6:35 for a liquor propane tank for Pine Lake RV Resort and Cottages. We have a live entertainment permit for Stonewall Grill. We have Department Head Reports, Public Works, Economic Development Coordinator, and our Town Administrator. On our action items this evening, we have requests to amend the Host Hotel liquor license for a change of manager. We will be possibly reappointing all members of the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee for another three-year term, appointing members for local emergency planning committee, appointing a planning commission member.
Is this for the meeting?
It is. Appointment to the Sturbridge Tourist Association. We are approving amended local incentives policy. We will be looking to adopt a policy for marijuana establishment host community agreements. We will be accepting proposals for the purchase of parcel area located at 508 Main Street. And we will be looking at oil and propane bids for fiscal year 2020. So it is not quite 6:35 for our public hearing. Do you want to... Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, public service announcements. Priscilla, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Chase?
I have none.
Okay, I have a few. Apologize, I'm not used to this role, Mary Blanchard's typically here. There will be a summer bus trip to Newport, Rhode Island on August 24th. It's a Saturday. It will depart from the Burgess Elementary parking lot. You'll arrive at roughly 9:45. At roughly 9:45, you'll arrive at the Newport Gateway Transportation and Visitor Center. You can plan your day ahead of time, enjoy a 10-minute walk to restaurants, shopping, hop on the Newport trolley if you wish. You can really pretty much plan your itinerary, explore beaches, the cliff walk. The trolley has multiple stops. It will then depart from the Newport Visitor Center at 6 o'clock, and you'll arrive back in Sturbridge at 7:45. If you are interested in reservations, contact the Sturbridge Recreation Department, (508) 347-2041, or email them at recreation@town.sturbridge.mass.us. The reservations are non-refundable, and it is $35 a person. Okay? And that is on August 24th, for those interested. There will also be a free boating course on Saturday, August 10th, to help you navigate safely on the waters. It's going to be held at the Sturbridge Host Hotel. It will be presented by the Mass Environmental Police, and you will receive a certificate of completion. It's an all-day course from 8:15 to 4:00 in the seminar room at the Host. There will be some food and light refreshment. Youth 12 years and older can attend. Adults and families are encouraged to attend. Even experienced boaters say it's worthwhile. Graduates 12 through 15 years of age receive a safety certificate, allowing them to operate a motorboat without adult supervision as required by law. The same is true for 16 and 17-year-olds who wish to operate a personal watercraft, like jet skis. The boating course is sponsored by SLAC, the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee, which represents all of our town lakes. So it's a very worthwhile course. It is free, and again, it's on Saturday, August 10th, at the Host Hotel. The police... What's going on? The police department will be hosting its annual National Night Out tomorrow evening, which is August 6th, from 4 o'clock to 8 on our town common. It's not... You will also have an opportunity to win a free raffle prize. There will be activities for all to enjoy. And again, it's 4 to 8 on our common tomorrow evening. And last, we will be holding our first, but hopefully not our last, pre-concert lawn games on Thursday, August 27th, on our common, from 3:30 to 5:30. It's two hours. There's cornhole, there's a variety of games to be played. It's free and fun for all ages, but all children must be supervised by their parents and guardians, no drop-offs. But it's a two-hour event, and it's hosted by the Special Events Committee. And again, that's pre-concert lawn games on Thursday, August 22nd. That's all I have for announcements. And now, it's beyond 6:35, so do have the...
Yes.
Dallas?
The Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 148, Section 13, hereby give notice that a public hearing will be held on August 5th, 2019, at 6:35 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass, on the application of Charlton Oil for a new license for storage tanks for flammable materials located at 30 River Road, Sturbridge, Mass.
Okay, do we have somebody here representing Charlton Oil? Okay, come on down. And I think we opened the public hearing at this point. Could I have a motion to open up our public hearing?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
A second.
Okay. How do we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. Hi, yes. Just tell us who you are and a little bit about your application.
I'm Ralph Nichols, President of Charlton Oil and Propane. The application is to put propane tanks in at Pine Ridge RV in Sturbridge.
Okay. Is this... Do we have to notify a butters for this? I believe so. Did you?
The list is there.
Okay, awesome.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have your application in front of us. Anything else you want to say before we have an opportunity to ask questions?
No, ask questions, anything you want.
Okay. Let's start. Priscilla, do you have any?
I don't have any.
Do you mind?
You're storing both above ground and underground?
Yes.
LP?
Yep.
11,000 gallons of... Has the fire department reviewed the...
We went there first, and they sent us here.
Yeah, and he's...
Yep.
We have the signature, okay.
Yep.
I was looking for that.
And no recommendations.
Oh, yeah, here it is. Here it is, I see. Okay, so a total of 12,000 gallons of storage.
Yes.
1,000 above ground and 11,000 under.
Approximately, yes, that's what we're going for with what we have in front of us at this point, yes.
Just for my own education, why are you putting them above and below ground, rather than below ground, for example?
Well, some of them are smaller tanks for a smaller application, so then there'd only be 120 tanks for like the maintenance and different stuff like that. So it's pending where they're getting put, you know what I mean? More than anything. And then, there might be a tank for like a filling station and stuff, which would be above ground.
And last, is this about the same size tanks that were used before when the...
I don't honestly know what they had there before. I think it was a variety of multiple-sized tanks. So these are all 500 and 1,000 gallon tanks that are going underground. It's all brand-new.
And the other tanks get removed, is that...
Yeah, they've all been gone, yeah. Above ground, below tanks, everything's been gone and cleaned up out there.
Okay. Do you want to add anything, Jeff? Okay, so it's a public hearing. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to provide input?
I was just wondering where they're going to put that.
Come on down. Just come on and introduce yourself for the record, and your... Where you live, and then you can ask anything you want.
My name is Charlie Morse. I live at 28 River Road, and I was just wondering where they're going to put the tanks at. They're going to have them in the same place as the other ones were, or...
I'm not exactly sure, because the places, you know, the landscape has been...
Yeah.
You know, but wherever the pavilions are, wherever the bathrooms are, you know, the way the tanks are going to be.
Hopefully further away from me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, you know, none of these tanks would ever hurt you anyways, with the distance.
I only had a problem with the other campground. Sometimes I'd go outside and I'd smell propane.
Yep.
Why am I smelling this, you know?
Right, yeah, no, you won't be smelling any of the propane from here, because it's all underground, and it's set back behind the pavilions, and then to the bathrooms, you know, upper bathroom, lower bathroom.
They'll probably have somebody that knows what they're doing out there, I guess.
All the lines are all brand-new. So, I mean, you take old campgrounds, and most of them are all add-ons, you know what I mean? They add-on the structure, they add-on that structure after time. All these lines are all PVC, plastic underground now, everything's brand-new.
It won't hurt the wells or nothing.
Nothing, no. Propane's clean, that's the way to go.
I think that's the only question I had, just...
And I'm Ralph Nichols of Charlton Oil and Propane. If you've got any questions, give me a call down at the office, leave a message, I'll call you back. Point four, sir.
So, pretty much, it's not going to be like right next to me, it's going to be further away than it was before.
Yeah, beyond the gate. Yeah, beyond the gate is the pavilions and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Like I said, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call.
All right.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
And always, if you smell anything, you know, you can always also contact our Town Administrator, don't hesitate...
Fire department.
Yeah, fire department, right. And contact the town in any event, don't go outside and smell something.
Maybe that's the way to go, because I would call the police before, and they wouldn't do anything about anything I'd call them about. So, you know, they were buddies with the other people in there, I guess, you know.
Well, I can attest to that, but certainly call.
Maybe had their hands in their pocket or something, I don't know, but...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
With all due respect, sir, that's not appropriate, but certainly call if you have any concerns at all, Charlton Oil or our Town Administrator with additional questions once they start. When is this process going to begin?
When will the permit and license be issued?
Well, we're going to vote on that shortly, so...
Yeah, so once that is issued...
How long does that... I don't even know in terms of start to finish.
Say if you issued it this week, we would set that next week, and, you know, all the tanks would probably be brought in the ground within 10 days.
Okay, so it's like under both two weeks or under two weeks?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Originally, it said Osterman was going to do it, right?
Right. Yeah, we got the bid.
I like Charlie more, but I'm better at it.
Excellent, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other?
Seriously, we've got a 24-hour answering service. You can call us, they call right out to me, and I'll call you right back. You've got any questions?
Cool.
Excellent.
Anybody else? Any comments, questions? Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the permit of a liquor propane tank at 30 River Road for Pine Lakes RV Resort and the applicant Charlton Oil?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero.
Excellent, thank you.
Good luck to you, thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good night, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have application for a live entertainment license to Stonewall Grill. Is Michael Johnson here? Hello, again, hello again.
Yeah, I'm going to stop punching in here, aren't I?
I know you were already here once before, but just say your name again for the record.
I'm Michael Johnson, the owner of Stonewall Grill.
Okay.
What we're looking for is a permit for some live entertainment, like having a piano night, maybe just have a DJ in there once in a while, or just like a one or two-person thing for the place, that's all.
So, you just go...
It'll be like Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, we're going to have that.
Okay. I'm just flipping to my application here.
Mary.
Oh, yes.
Just Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
That's what I'm... For now, I mean, it's... I'd like to have it for whenever I want it, you know, if it's in case somebody wants to do a little function there, and they want to have a little acoustic thing.
Well, I would be concerned about the 12:00 AM on a Sunday.
It's all just that one.
Yeah, we're going to be an early band, early night. I would say I would like the permit to be at least maybe till 10:00, if we could do the latest.
On every night, or just...
Whatever, every night, whatever it is.
Every night, just 10:00?
Yeah.
10:00 PM?
Yeah. We realize that's not going to be early.
Because the application says 12.
Right.
Oh, it does?
Shall we modify that?
Modify, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and what are the hours again that you're requesting?
11:00 in the morning, and we close...
10?
We're going to have whatever the liquor license applies us for, 1:00, 10:00.
Okay, so we're going to amend it to read 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
Yep.
Yeah, not the infamous happy hour from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, which is actually from 11:00 in the morning to midnight.
Yeah, that's a long time.
That's quite a happy hour, huh?
You look sad, you both.
Right, right.
Just, I'm sure it's me, but do you currently hold a... Have you ever applied for any other type of license for this business? Yes. If yes, please describe, and then you just put business.
Well, we've had other restaurants out in Greenfield, and of course, we have it at the Tavern in Wales.
Okay.
Wales Tavern, yeah.
So other businesses.
Like George Tavern, I'm sorry.
Okay, and you are the sole owner of this business?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do we have any questions, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
And we got the additional information that we requested for the liquor license?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Nothing that would prohibit the sale of alcohol.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the application for an entertainment license to Stonewall Grill with the owner being Michael Johnson?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Four, zero.
Thank you, guys.
Excellent, good luck.
Thank you. Hopefully soon, right?
Yeah, no, we always like another restaurant in town.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Personally, for sure. All right, we're moving on to Department Head Reports. DPW, you've got them. Hi, Butch.
You got the report, you have any questions on CS's June and July?
Anything you want to highlight in particular before we ask questions?
Not on the report, I just highlighting, I just wanted to say Clark Road is well underway. It's two more days of grading, and then Wednesday will be off, and then Thursday and Friday will be paving the base, and that will make it so much better. And then we'll raise the castings, and hopefully at the end of next week, we'll have it topped.
Everything going off without a hitch?
So far, so good, yeah.
Nice.
A little longer, a little longer than we thought, but...
Yeah. And it's hot to be working, but your workers are...
This week's been nice.
This week, yeah, no.
Last week.
Lot of water breaks, hopefully. Any questions on the town reports, June, July? No? I feel like I'm always telling you about potholes, and you did a fan... Your crew did a fantastic job of fixing a lot of them.
You got a new one?
Well, I didn't create it, but I think right next to where you already had one repair, I don't know, but on 20, right by Sturbridge Coffee House, if you're heading east, where that kind of roundabout is, there's another good-sized one in the road, so...
I'll pass that on to the state.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
Oh, if you're going to do that, may I?
Certainly.
On 131, it's off again, if we're going to throw it to the state, because that's theirs. And they fixed it once, but there was a couple of spots that have come back up.
Yeah.
Is this... Oh, were you talking about the one down by On the Way to Big Bunnies? The one that's half-done?
On Sturbridge side.
Sturbridge side, okay.
Sturbridge side. There's another one, though, I can't remember exactly where it was, I can let you know that I saw just the other day that I went around.
Usually, if I call them and tell them I'm getting a lot of complaints about this area, they respond, so we'll go with it.
Oh, good, okay, good. And it was good, all the... We had a lot of overbrush on the sidewalk on 20, but I noticed that somebody got out there and did it.
Yeah, I called them, but they have no machine in the area, they said it's operable, so we did it.
Yeah, that's typical. I don't think they ever mean do it, is my understanding. But sometimes you get residents, you know, they walk and exercise.
Yeah, it comes over the side of the guardrail, so we went back and trimmed it back.
Nice, thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, one other thing?
Yes.
I heard from the Little League group, and they were very appreciative of the work you did for them on the fields, and they want to say thank you very much, and they wanted it public, so, thank you.
I was Little League once myself.
Not that long ago.
Yeah, just the other day.
Sure.
Have a good night. All right, Kevin? Oh, we're all set, thank you, Butch. Okay, the Economic Development Coordinator, Kevin Filczak. Hi, Kevin.
So I have a number of different items for the... For this evening, I'm not sure if there's any particular order you'd like me to go in.
Excellent.
Whatever your preference is. Well, why don't we just start with my... I sent my monthly in, we can just start with that, if there's any questions on any of that.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
Apologies.
It's okay.
I sent in my monthly report to the Town Administrator, which I believe has been provided to you, if you have any questions on any of those items. The only thing that isn't in here would be just some of the Special Events Committee items that have been going on, obviously, the farmer's market's still going, we're preparing another bonfire late September, early October, a road race, date to be determined, and, as the selectman said at the beginning, a pre-concert lawn game event. So those are just a few of the items that I'd like to add.
Mm-hmm. Good stuff. Any questions on his report? They're all very thorough, we don't have a lot of questions today.
I like to write, if you couldn't tell.
There you go, yes.
Well, then, I... If it's all right with the board, I'll switch over to our... My discussion on the branding and marketing strategy that we have at the STA is doing, and I'd like to invite up Brian Amity, Chair of the Sturbridge Tourist Association.
Brian, just into the microphone, say who you are again for the residents watching.
Good evening, my name is Brian Amity, I'm the Chairman of the Sturbridge Tourist Association.
And we wanted to come before you tonight, because currently, we're conducting an RFP for a branding and marketing strategy that will conclude the proposals need to be in by the 14th, and we're hoping to have a vendor selected by the end of the month, so that we can have them beginning work sometime in mid-September. And, Brian, is there any...
Well, I mean, this all came about because after going through years and years of people coming to us with marketing ideas, and us okaying them, we're not... I'm not comfortable, and other board members weren't comfortable, whether we're really seeing the best results that we should be getting. Mostly, the marketing effort has been done through the chamber with us, and, you know, in today's world, you see all these click-throughs, 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 you all know that. You get... They're all on the internet, and you might see something, and you might click on it, but would you ever really go visit like the Sturbridge? So, in the many conversations we've had every year with the Finance Committee, you know, when our budget comes up, you know, especially with Larry, he always says, "What are the results that you're getting?" And you can't really tell if those people are really... You may click on it, but are they really coming to Sturbridge? And are we really spending the money in the best way? So we thought this would be the year that we try to invest in branding and a good marketing campaign with the RFP.
And to just add on to that, so there's two components to this that are very important. First is, as Brian said, the marketing strategy itself, who we're advertising to, you know, we're trying to talk to everyone from potential visitors, which would bring in tourism dollars, to future residents, to future businesses, to future conferences, all these groups we want to try to outreach to. We want to figure out who they are, where they are, and what's the best medium to reach them through. Are they all on social media? Are they all reading the newspaper? We don't necessarily have that data, so this would be a good chunk of the report would be telling us how we can best reach them, and what's the best way to reach them. The other part, as Brian said, is the branding component, which is, we want to sell Sturbridge, and to do that, everyone has a slightly different version of what Sturbridge is. If we polled the board, I'm sure each of you would have a slightly different version. We want to have a singular message for how we're selling the Town of Sturbridge to all these different groups. And when I say brand, I don't mean a logo, I mean, I'll quote Jeff Bezos, you know, "Your brand is what people say about you when you're not in the room." That's what we're trying to develop, that messaging of, "This is Sturbridge," and people say, "Sturbridge, I understand what that means, and I don't just mean the village." That's really what we're trying to get to. So, this is going to be a year-long process for us, and ultimately, we really are here tonight to encourage the Board of Selectmen to participate throughout the process, because once we're presented with that final brand, we really need the board to look at adopting it as a formal brand of the community. We, as the STA, or I shouldn't say we, the STA and as our staff person, you know, we want to make sure that this brand is, you know, we're making a significant investment, we want to make sure that it's going to pay off in the end, and it's going to be used. And if it's not adopted, then it's really a... It's a nice exercise, but it doesn't have that long-staying power. So it's really important that as this process goes through, that we keep you involved, and that you participate in different discussions we have, and in the end, development of that brand.
Excellent. I'll start. Do you want to provide... Want to open it up to questions if you have some?
Sure, please.
Priscilla, do you?
No.
Chase?
I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, just the other day, my wife picked up the magazine, and, you know, it said everything, what to do in different local towns, and I just think it's a really good idea to push for.
All right.
Michael? You know, Sturbridge has worked for many years on the brand that we currently have. And, you know, I go different places, and, you know, and people always, you know, comment about the Town of Sturbridge because, largely because of the efforts of the STA and so forth. We are a very well-known community, and I'm not just saying locally, I mean, you know, halfway across the country. I was in Grants Pass, Oregon, and they all... People there knew all about Sturbridge and stuff. I mean, it's just amazing, the name recognition Sturbridge, Massachusetts gets, and so we have a significant brand already. I am presuming this process will be building on the existing brand.
It would. You're...
Go ahead.
You're right, there is... People know Sturbridge. The advantage that we have over a lot of other communities is that people know Sturbridge, whether they know it just for the village, or whether they know it for a restaurant, they know the Town of Sturbridge. What we want people to think about is not just that one thing that they know about the town, you know, whether it be the village, or again, that restaurant, we want them to think of Sturbridge as a community, so that they... We can start to entice people to come here, to live here, which would obviously increase our tax base, bring in new business, bring in more visitors. We want to make a message that will connect and resonate with more people for more things. So you're right, people do know us, and that's fantastic, that gives us a great leg up. We want to expand on that and build on that, so that it's... We just continue to be known as a great community, and it draws more people in.
Yeah, I think this is really key, and I... Parallel to what's going on in Worcester right now, with the rejuvenation of Worcester, right now, with the rejuvenation of Worcester, and what's happening with the Woo Sox coming. We want to piggyback on that and get those people to come to Sturbridge, okay? We don't just want them to go to Worcester and go home. We want them to come to Sturbridge. And hopefully, we'll get some good, good marketing feedback here.
You bring up a good point. We've been working with Discover Central Mass, which is based out of Worcester. I mean, I serve on their Board of Directors. We've been working with them to build up Sturbridge in the region, and we're doing a marketing campaign with them this year to really continue to spread that knowledge of Sturbridge. So, you know, we're doing a lot of different things. This year is a very, very busy year for the STA, and...
Yeah, there's actually, on their website, discovercentralmass/sturbridge, so if they click on that, they can find out what's all about, what's going on in Sturbridge. They have a calendar of events, so, events, you know, that Kevin can put on there, we can, anybody can put on there. So, I'm laughing, because on Saturday morning, like, about 3:30 in the morning, I stopped by and saw Kevin, and all he could say to me, his first thing he said to me is, "I really want to see the numbers on this event." He's a data person, for sure.
Nothing wrong with that.
At 3:30 in the morning, I was impressed that I could speak coherently. It was for the Pan Mass Challenge.
Yeah, just in case anybody was wondering, we weren't out drinking. It was the Pan Mass Challenge. Oh, God.
You have more to add?
No, 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 I don't want to add anymore. I'd just get in trouble.
Not to be, I guess I'm going to be a little redundant, but I, you know, echo Chase's sentiment. I think it's a great idea. I think it's ambitious, you know, and so that's awesome. And I like that whole idea of, you know, utilizing Worcester more, because I also think that we have to stress, we're in Worcester County, and there's still sometimes a conception by people who live further east in Massachusetts, that we're Western Mass, you know? And I always have to say, you know, don't get us confused with Stockbridge, but even Sturbridge, they go, "No, we're the villages." And I always say, "We're 20 miles from Worcester. We're a part of Worcester County. We're Central Mass." And I think by stressing that, we will benefit from the rejuvenation of the Worcester area with the sports team coming and the new, you know, they want to put new apartments in and restaurants. And so, we have to stress, you know, we're really an extension of Worcester, just as much as the other boroughs. So, I also think it's a great idea. We're still keeping our logo, I presume, of the weather vein.
We haven't made any decisions on that. That's really what we're bringing in these, obviously, the town spent a lot of money in time.
That's what I was thinking, right. So, hopefully, that will complement the brand.
Again, a brand is not a logo.
Right, I get it.
A brand is messaging. So, if we can incorporate that logo into whatever brand we develop, all the better, because that, like you said, we've already developed it. So, it's, it would be, it would be pointless to change it now, after we've invested all the time to change all the signs and...
Right. And then, I just had one thing on the timing. Are you still trying to meet these deadlines? Because it seems, it seems pretty close, because today's the 5th, and I noticed questions are no later than the 7th.
Yep. It's been up since early July. I think it was up like July 4th.
I'm just wondering about the people who might be watching now, but you're going to stick, that's, if you think they work, it just seems a little soon to me.
We are ambitious. I will fully acknowledge that. But the STA has, in my time, they're incredibly dedicated group of people who are willing to really put the time in to do this. And I think that we're in a good position to meet all those deadlines.
All right. We actually, Kevin had a more ambitious timeline.
Even than this, like yesterday.
So, we discussed it, and we gave a little lengthier, especially with a lot of it happening in the month of July with the bids coming in, you know, with people on vacation and things.
Okay. So, I just want to read for the record, then. Any questions pertaining to the services required by the town of Sturbridge, or the technical aspects of this request for, quote, proposal, thank you, should be directed in writing to Kevin Filczek, the Economic Development and Tourist Coordinator, at his email, kfilczek@town.sturbridge.mass.us. And questions must be received no later than August 7th at 4 o'clock, so that's two days from now. And a sealed, written proposal with separately sealed technical and price proposal must be submitted, again, to the town of Sturbridge at Kevin's attention. Six copies of the proposal must be received no later than noon on Wednesday, August 14th. That's a week from this Wednesday. The final contract price and fee will be negotiated with the highest-ranked proposal, just in case anybody's watching us.
Absolutely.
Of course.
I think it's a real smart way to go, to have a professional marketing and team working for us. I mean, it was nice what the Chamber's done for us all these years and stuff, but they're not the, the marketing professionals. You're going after, you know, a national marketing team right here.
Yeah. We are the second, in Worcester County, we are the second-largest draw. We bring in the most revenues behind Worcester, which is, you know, we do better than Auburn. We're an impressively, we're an impressive community, first, community of 10,000. So, you know, we want to punch above our weight class when we can.
My experience in economic development is when you use the professionals properly, you get results. So, hopefully, this will work.
Do you need a motion from us, or just this was to update us on what you're doing?
It's kind of an update for you.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Can I, just asking this generally, in your branding, and in what you talked about being close to Worcester and capitalizing on the Red Sox coming, Paw Sox coming to Worcester. Do you see any possibility for some type of public transportation that we could capitalize on as a community, that people could stay at a hotel, and they'd get a ride to the train station, or the bus station, or something like that? Do you even see that as remotely possible?
Priscilla, transportation is a serious issue here.
Yeah?
I agree. If we want to tap into that market more, it is a discussion we should look at having, because you're right. If you're someone who's coming in from out of town, and say you don't want to get a, you know, an Uber or Lyft, or rent a car, public transport's your only option, we're talking about, we have a proposal for the STA currently about bus tours. We're talking about bus tours, trying to bring the bus tours back to Sturbridge in greater numbers. And, again, transportation is a question that we're wrestling with, of how do you just transport them just around the town of Sturbridge? So, to connect to that Worcester market, which they have, you know, to their credit, some great restaurants, some great, they've just, they've really developed that downtown, even if it's just to go to a concert, a hockey game. So, there's a lot of things that we can do. And I can say that regionally, we are trying to better connect with Worcester, and through those discussions, that really is something that maybe we, we haven't talked about, but perhaps we should begin to have more conversations on.
Well, the train stop is a big conversation that we're not having. And I don't know why we're not having it, but we're not. And I think that we're missing a niche somewhere. That's why I asked this question, because I keep getting people asking me, you know, "Are we just closing the door on the train?" And I said, "You know, I don't know." And that's why, when you just talked about what you talked about, I mean, if you could do, like, you know, I know there's a lot of hotels in Worcester, too, but if you could get local hotels, which I'm sure they would, say, "You know what? If you go to a Railers game, or you go to a concert, you know what? We will provide you a voucher to go on a bus, or on a train, or whatever, and it, just one extra, or you get coupons somewhere, however you do this." But you can keep them here, is what I'm thinking. The bed, the room tax would stay here.
Absolutely.
And so, that's why I'm just wondering, because these are all great ideas, but if we can't connect point A to point B, that will frustrate some people.
Yeah, I agree with you, Priscilla. You know, it's something that has to be looked into, whether, you know, any funding through the STA can be done. I don't, I don't know.
We did try just some local transportation last year with our little shuttle, which had some viability, which was good. But I think it, at the very least, it proved that there's a need there for more transportation, both in town and...
Yeah, I think Kevin's right. And you've got a, you already got my wheels turning there, Priscilla. So, it may be something we might be able to look at with this company to do. Can this company do like a hotel shuttle to Worcester without, but you're right, other public transportation, you know, whether trains, or buses, or whatever.
And this could also tie in with the Economic Development Community, Commonwealth Community Compact Grant that we're doing. You know, all this ties in together. So, if we get it, if it comes to it, where at the end of the year, we see both are, you know, pointing towards, this needs to be an important need, we can reassess goals at that time. But we can at least begin those conversations now.
Yeah. As far as public transportation, I'm on the Worcester Regional Transit Authority, and this year, we brought bus service from, extended it from the Town Hall, library area, and Southbridge up to Big Bunny. And the intent is, is to get bus service in Route 29 for WRTA route. The intent is to get it into, into Sturbridge, and if there's enough ridership, and, you know, I've been promoting this, that there may be an express, they have to be sure there's going to be enough ridership to make it worthwhile. It's all about, that's, it's all about the money, and whether or not they can generate some revenue for ridership to justify the route. And so, they're, I'm working on them to get the bus route back into Sturbridge, center at least, so people can pick up a bus and go, go into Worcester and back and forth. And eventually, my, my dream would be to have an express bus going right into the ballpark. And that would be great for us.
Yeah, it would be.
I was just going to say something. I think Priscilla and Mike raised excellent points. If we want to capitalize, in particular, what Priscilla said in you with the bus, on Worcester revitalizing itself. But I wonder, too, if it could be like a public-private joint effort, in the sense, both financially, as well as with ideas, because certainly, the STA is funded, but, you know, you...
We need help.
You have, you know, I mean, we only have so much there. I mean, we have a lot more than other communities, don't get me wrong. But still, you're marketing, you're spending it in a number of ways, and we have a lot of hotels. So, I wonder if a conversation can't be had with all the hotels on coming up with some kind of, I know, but it would benefit them. We have a lot of hotels, and if the town of Sturbridge kicked in some funding, looked to the state for some funding for Central Mass, and the hotels, if they want to get the Paw, the Woo Sox, if that's what they're going to be called, you know, participants and audience, they could provide some kind of shuttle. I mean, we're only, you know, 20-some-odd miles away, just like at an airport, you know, the hotels have the shuttles that go directly to the airport. And so, a bus would be great, but, you know, I also agree with Priscilla, but I think that the hotels collectively, perhaps, we could have a conversation with them. I know they compete with each other, but they would also benefit.
That's, that's the key. And I think I've mentioned this before, and there's not a hotel organization here in town where we all gather together and talk. There's certain people who I worked with, you know, I had good relationships with, but there are others out there who do not want to deal with anything but themselves.
That's unfortunate.
Which is unfortunate, Mary.
But, you know, I think, you know, while there are some challenges, I would say that we do have a number of hoteliers, like Brian said, who, who are willing to work in, I will go back to that Sturbridge Express that we piloted last year, where we were able to get a number of hotels on board with that project. And even if it starts small, and just say, "We rent the shuttle to go to a Woo Sox game, you know, once a month," something...
Yeah, or on weekends.
However it is, but make it a manageable project, that's something that we can pilot and test. And, you know, if it, if there's a proof of concept, then perhaps we can grow it and get more hoteliers on board and begin those conversations, because we do have a number of hotels in town that are willing to work and are willing to, to collaborate. So, I think it's a matter of, over the next year, while the stadium's being built, while those discussions are being had, to bring people on board. And hopefully, through these projects that we're doing with the STA, we can begin those conversations and say, "We're doing this not just for the town," and I think it needs to be made clear, too. "We're not doing this for the STA. We're not doing this for the town of Sturbridge, the entity. We're doing this for the, you know, the Sturbridge community, business, resident, everyone." That's what this is for, not just for the town of Sturbridge.
Exactly. I agree. Anybody else?
We could talk on this about for hours, I'm sure, but...
Do you have more that you want to discuss with us?
I do. I don't know if it would be under a different agenda item, though.
It's up to the Chair if you want to cover item number F, or I, letter F, while Kevin is here.
Yeah, otherwise, why keep Kevin longer than he needs to be, so?
Yeah, I got to talk on the TIFs now, so.
And item number E.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, you're welcome.
Yeah, Brian. Okay, so, we're going to move on to item E and A, E and F. Appointments to the Sturbridge Tours Association and approve the amended local incentives policy.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about incentives policy?
Yes, I'd be more than happy to discuss that. So, I've provided for you two documents. The first is a revision to the existing TIF policy, which in your policy book is Policy Number B7, as well as an application for future local tax incentive projects. I'll go through the existing TIF policy, the changes to the tax incentive policy first. So, as I said in a previous meeting, I think within the last month, the Town Administrator and I have had a number of different conversations over the past few months with different potential businesses who might be interested in different tax incentives, and that caused us to revisit our policies on the matter. And what we found was, the policy that was adopted back in 2017 really focused on TIFs. And while that's the town's written preference, we do allow for special tax assessments as well. And because of that, the policy really looked like we only want, we'll only take TIFs and not take special tax assessments. So, we wanted to go in and revise the language to show that we're willing to have the diversity of local incentives that are allowed us under Mass general law. We also wanted to tighten up some of the grammar and general language, which time is, kind of, we look at and say, "Well, we can tighten this up a little bit." So, those were generally the changes to the TIF policy. I'm more than happy to answer any questions on that. I've provided for you my written changes. And, again, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have on that document.
So, you're looking to adopt a review committee? Or do we already, we already...
This, the commit, the reference to a local incentive review committee is really a working, I say committee, but it could be defined as more of a working group. It's just several staff members and a member of the Board of Selectmen who would get together to review the application initially, and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen that would say, "This is a good use of a tax incentive," or "This is not a good use of a tax incentive," and why. And then, the Board of Selectmen has the prerogative to make their own decision, and to take the recommendation, or to not take the recommendation. If they, if you choose to take the recommendation, it would then go back to this local incentive review committee, or working group, however you want to define it, which would then negotiate with the business in question, and come up with the actual agreement document, and would come up with the actual schedule of the incentive for the five-to-20-year period that it would be in effect. And then, it would go back to the Board of Selectmen to make their decision, and then to town meeting, to the voters, and then to the state to make the final verdict.
I personally think it's a great idea. I know, up until now, you haven't had a formal or informal review committee, but still, it would have been you, the Town Administrator, I assume the assessor, and the planner.
Correct.
So, really, the only person you're adding, which is a good thing, is a select person, and then they have a little knowledge of it prior to when you come forward and present a TIF.
To correct that slightly, the policy from 2017 did have a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, it did.
This is really just changing the name.
Oh, I didn't realize that. So, we've already, I, I haven't been the person that has done it, so I didn't know that.
You haven't had a TIF application come in yet to actually test this process yet.
Oh, okay.
So, the TIFs, the last three TIFs that you've had have all been done prior to this policy being enacted, prior to the 2017 policy being enacted.
Okay. Oh, so, the publicos, and that was all prior to...
All prior, yes.
Interesting.
Yeah, we were developing the policy while we were negotiating.
Okay. Anybody questions? Priscilla?
No.
Chase? Mike?
Yeah, I, well, I like the additional wording, giving the Board of, "In unique cases," on the last page.
Yes.
Gives the Board of, it appears to give the Board of Selectmen a little bit more flexibility on, if we get a unique case.
We want, we added that, actually.
That was, the Selectmen's correct. That was added, actually, at the request, I believe, of, I believe, your request at the last meeting.
Yeah, we need a little flex, just a little.
Yeah.
Sorry. Jeff, did you read?
I wasn't here, so I'm just saying.
Okay, yes. Just because, yeah, I wanted, we wanted a little wiggle room. That was before you were elected, and I'm happy to see that language remains. Did you also look, I assume...
Kevin and I worked on the amendments together.
Together.
Yeah.
Right. Do we need a motion?
Do we have a member of the Board that's part of that? You said this was before that, though, so we never put anybody on that.
No, and honestly, the way that I phrased it, it's up to you to basically appoint someone. So, it could be you one time, and Selectman Kabinsky the next. It really is at your discretion.
Okay.
We will always be on it, but...
Right, right.
Shall we, would you like a motion to approve the amended policy? Okay. Anybody willing to make the motion to approve the amended local incentives policy?
Someone.
A second? Okay. All in favor? Okay, 4-0. And I guess when we're closer to, I mean, I guess we could take a volunteer, but we don't have anything before us. Maybe we should wait until we actually have something to review. Right?
So, then, I can move on to the application that I provided for you as well, unless you have any questions on that. That one's fair, this is fairly straightforward. There's three sections, basic information. Second section will deal with the data, the what of the application, so what are you applying, what number of jobs, location of the parcel, that sort of thing, current valuation. And then, the third really deals with the why. Why do you need this incentive? You know, how is it going to benefit the town, et cetera? It's a fairly straightforward application. I would say, if you, before you adopt it, I would recommend that you change three words, or four words in it. I actually have TIF agreements and TIF review committees still in it on the last page. I'd recommend that you allow me to make those small changes before you...
Okay, I see it.
On the very last page.
It's the...
And there's one on the, there's one on page two of six that just escaped me. I apologize for that. for that.
And just for the record, how are you going to amend it? Please describe for the...
No, I would describe, on page two of six, I would change TIF Review Committee, parentheses, TRC, to Local Incentive Review Committee, LIRC. On page six of six, I would change, please describe for the, I would delete TIF Review Committee for the Local Incentive Review Committee. And I would change TIF Agreement to Incentive Agreement. And then, one paragraph down, in the event the town does not choose to provide your project with a, I would delete TIF and add Local Incentive.
Right.
And those would be the only changes.
I feel compelled to find a typo on behalf of Mary Blanchard, but I don't see any.
I did that on your behalf.
Priscilla, usually I could about finding them as well. Are you, I don't see any. Okay. All right. Do we like a motion on the application as well? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the application process for the amended local incentive policy?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Excellent. Thank you.
Item E, or number E.
Okay, the Appointments to the Sturbridge Tourist Association. Okay, Brian's here, I know. Oh, okay, excellent. Come on up.
Yeah. Oops.
All right, so we have our five members. Will we just, I'll turn it over to you, Jeff.
Thank you. The Sturbridge Tourist Association is a combination of community residents and hoteliers in town. Ms. Merriman is here. She works for the Comfort Inn.
Right.
And she would fill one of the slots from the hotel community. So we would recommend her appointment effective July one and put her to work. She's very, I've met with her on it. She's very excited about partaking, and we'd be happy to have her as a member.
Beautiful. Would you like to add anything to that and endorsement?
I'm just really excited about, I really am excited about being part of the Board, especially coming from the hotel perspective. I think that's going to help a little. And I'm excited to work with Brian, actually, on this whole bus idea, because that has been one of my little pet projects, too. So I'm hoping to work together with him on that as well. So excited to be part of it and to try and get people into Sturbridge and make them realize what a great town this is, all year long, not just in the summer.
Right. And just say your name for the record again.
Oh, sure. Dawn Merriman.
Thank you.
And just to add, I'd be really excited to have another hotel person who understands the hotel business like I do.
I'm sitting back there nodding at everything you guys are saying.
Do I have a motion to appoint?
Some moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Good luck.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you for being willing to do this.
Absolutely, it's my pleasure.
You're coming in at an exciting time.
I'm excited, yes, very much so. Thank you so much.
Everything going on. Very good, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, moving on to the town, I'm not going to skip you this week, Town Administrator Department report.
Well, thank you. Just a few things. We reserve, we got notice that Sue Grandone, who's chairman of our Council of Aging, her husband passed away. So she's asked that donations be made in their name to the senior center. Also, Wednesday, August seventh, as we have our Junior Fire Academy going on at the Public Safety Building, Life Flight will be landing a helicopter there at 1:30 on Wednesday. So if anybody wants to come out and watch that, you're welcome to do that. 253 Organic, which is one of the proposed or, proposed marijuana retailers, will be having their outreach meeting at the Public House on September 11th at 6:00 PM. We'll get that out on our notification processes, but that's going to be their community outreach meeting. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Okay, so, let's see. The first actionable item we have, to amend the host hotel liquor license for a change of manager. Is Sandra Morgan here?
She can't make it. She came in last week.
Oh, that's right.
And she couldn't be in attendance tonight, so.
Okay.
Sorry, but she provided the TIF cert.
Right. Okay. All right. So everybody, is there, are there questions on the application that we can direct to Jeff? How does everybody feel about voting in her absence, change of manager?
Does she meet all the requirements?
Yeah, and she did come in.
Yeah, I agree.
Just trying to find her application.
Everybody's flipping, because I like it on both sides, but sometimes it's tired.
You know, I know, it's difficult, isn't it?
Is there a page number?
Yeah.
We can see.
Yeah, I want to make a suggestion after when you go to new business on that.
Okay.
Oh.
Is it after the host agreement? Did somebody find it? I read it when we got it.
It starts on page thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-three?
Is it thirty-three?
Thirty-two.
Yeah, here it is. Thirty-three, thirty-two.
It's on your agenda, it's page thirty-two.
Thirty-two, and...
And the numbers are at the top of the pages.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there it is.
I'm getting those page numbers.
Interesting. We'll figure it out.
I tried to step with others.
You're fine. Just have to make it bigger than all of them.
She's TIP, she, she's TIP.
Yeah.
TIP certified.
Yes.
Yes, she is.
Anybody have any questions on it?
I think she meets all the requirements.
Right.
So I would make a motion to appoint Sandra Morgan for the host liquor license as a change of manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Okay. Next, on the actionable items, reappointing all members of SLAC, Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee for a three-year term. If you want to just tell us why we're doing this.
Yes, the Sturbridge Lakes Advisory Committee is active, but through the years, we've lost track of appointment dates and expiration dates. And as I said, in an effort to just get all these reorganized, particularly in the clerk's office with their new software, we felt just reappointing all the membership effective July one of this year with full terms would be the most efficient way to do that, rather than trying to go back through records and figure it out. So there, the committee's on board with that. We've had conversations, they're supportive. The list of those members participating is in the packet, and we just ask that we just start fresh with new appointments.
Okay, I'll just read them for the record. Laurel Carpenter, representative from Leadmine Lake, Lee Darren from Cedar Lake, Bruce Gronn from Big Alum, Laurie Palmer from Leadmine Lake, Marita Tassi from South Pond, Robert Sparrow from Walker Pond, Charles Roy Jr. from Big Alum, Thomas Quinlan from Cedar Lake, I'm the representative for the Board of Selectmen, Mary Dowling, Chris Mazaika, South Pond. And then we have a vacancy for Conservation, a vacancy on Walker Pond, a vacancy for East Brimfield Dam, and a vacancy for Long Pond. So there are four vacancies. You want to entitate it in one motion for all of them? Okay, do I have a motion to reappoint the SLAC members?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero.
Thank you.
Is there...
I lost my place. Okay. Appointing members for the Local Emergency Planning Commission, Committee, excuse me, on page forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a memo from Kevin on the revised membership. And I will read who we are. Jeff Bridges, the Chair, replacing our former Town Administrator Leon Gomond. Leslie Wong, from the, for the Council on Aging, replacing Heather Weston as the new department head. Ken Lacy from the Board of Health replaces Bree Eschdott. Butch Jackson, DBW Director, being added for Greg Morse. Jeremy Jalbert, IT Director, and that's another new addition. Do I, can I have a motion for all of, for the approval of all of them for the Emergency Management Committee?
Some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And, excuse me, Emergency Planning Committee. All in favor? Four zero. All opposed?
Just one additional motion on that. If you could move to appoint the Town Administrator's Chair.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Four zero.
Thank you.
So, did we, appointment of the Planning Commission Member, forty-seven. Oh, we just did that, right?
No, no, I'm sorry.
This is Planning Board.
This is Planning Board.
Yes. Oh, of course, Plan, I'm used to calling it the Planning Board, not the Planning Commission.
Yeah, somebody put...
Yeah, that was, that's my, my bad.
That's okay.
Too many towns.
All right, you want to tell us about your interview process, Jeff?
Yes, we received three applicants for the vacancy on the Planning Board. I interviewed each one, well, not really interviewed, but had a conversation with each one. Each one, each person had their own unique qualifications. But Jeff Adams, who's here this evening, I'd prefer to have him appointed at this time. I think he's the fit for what we need. The other two probably have spots down the road, but I think Jeff would fit in nicely in our current makeup of the Board. He's an attorney, been involved in community organizations in his other communities and in his profession, so I just think he'd be a good fit at this time.
Jeff, do you want to come on down and just introduce yourself after that?
Hello?
Hi.
Jeff Adams. Moved to Sturbridge about a year and a half ago. Looking forward to, you know, pending the vote.
Right.
Looking forward to getting in there and giving back to the committee.
I loved your letter, and it was...
It's an excellent letter.
Yeah.
Wonderful. I'm glad you liked it.
And it's nice to get people who have moved here relatively recent, because you add another perspective, and I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, my, I mean, my aunt moved to Fisk Hill and bought up one of the Bed and Breakfast eleven years ago. And so I've been coming here every summer, and we knew right away when my wife was in Worcester, I was in Springfield, that Sturbridge would be the perfect equidistant landing spot. So I'm actually in Hartford now, but, you know...
Still very commutable.
Still very commutable. My wife's still in Worcester, so.
Excellent.
It's perfect.
Great for your family.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to appoint Jeff Adams to the vacancy on the Planning Board?
Some moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Excellent. Four zero.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Have a good night.
You, too.
You, too.
We'll be in touch and get you information and the meeting schedule and get you sworn in. Thank you.
Fantastic. Have a good night.
You, too.
Nice to see new blood.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Okay, an appointment to the Sturbridge Tourist Association?
We did that.
Oh, we already did it, yes. Moving along. Okay, now we're up to adopting a policy for marijuana establishment host community agreements. Oh, and Jean Bouvan is joining us. Hey, Jean.
So, if I may?
Yes.
At a recent meeting where you had the town council out to talk about host community agreements, there was a desire on the part of the Board to adopt some policy that kind of gave an outline and some parameters to what we would look for in host community agreements and the process we would undertake to recommend those to you, to develop the agreements and bring them before the Board for adoption. Working with town council and Jean Bouvan, Town Planner, we've developed the draft policy that's in front of you, which provides a broad overview of what we would look for in host community agreements, the process we would undertake to negotiate, and how would we, how we would make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for which ones to proceed with. And it's in front of you this evening. So we'd be happy to answer any questions or go over any, more in any detail.
Anything you want to highlight in particular, Jeff or Jean? I thought it was very well, and it's lengthy, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
The key, it appoints a lead negotiator, and it allows that lead negotiator to pick from individual staff members the resources they would need to get a good outcome. So it doesn't create a committee, but it creates a process. And I think that's what we were kind of looking for, because it's very much an ad hoc situation. One site may be more traffic impacted than another, one site may have more impact on neighbors than another. So it allows the flexibility on what resources we bring to the table for review. It also provides that the applicants offset the costs of legal review of the applications.
Anybody, Priscilla, do you want to?
Yes, I do. One of the things on page seventy-one that it says is that the Board reserves the right to execute more than two host community agreements for marijuana dealers. Does that mean more than two retailers?
Yes. And that really depends on who those first two are.
Isn't that based on how many liquor permits we have, Jean? On how many of these we can have? Seems to me that we had, this discussion is familiar to me, but I'm, I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Isn't it based on the liquor?
It, the difference between the two or the three come down to whether or not Heal, which has an existing host community agreement that is exclusive for medical...
So if we give Heal the go-ahead to do retail now, they're one of the two?
Yes.
Okay, that's how I understood that. Okay, that was just a little bit.
If we didn't, when their moratorium expired...
Then we have three.
Then you could have...
By default.
Perhaps.
Because we have the agreement. Okay. The other thing that I had is on page seventy-six where it says, other costs.
Seventy-six is a draft of a H, just an example of a...
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, so let me, let me go there anyway. If we have a situation where we agree to a certain cost, are we going to be covered, are we going to cover ourselves that, since we don't know, since we're, this is new territory for us, and we may negotiate and say we need this percent and that percent, and all by state standards. But what happens because of where we are, and because we're considered the crossroads of New England, what happens if our costs exceed what we're being given?
And I think that's a crucial element to include in our agreements with these vendors. If your particular operation is impactful beyond the initial scope, there has to be some way to address that.
Okay.
I agree with Priscilla. Is there a language that reflects that?
No, not yet.
Well, none of these are agreements. These are just examples of our town.
Right, no, I get it, I get it. But it's good that she highlighted it, that it does it right now.
Right.
More, Priscilla?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Chase?
The examples from the other town, did you want us to pull out what we, what we liked from them and discuss them with you at a later date when you're negotiating?
If there are items that you see in those that you like, and if there are items that you see in those that you don't like, just send me an email or, or grab me offline and say, hey, I like this, I didn't like that. Be happy to take that input before we get to a recommendation.
Yeah, I went through the other towns' community agreements and kind of did a little punch list.
No, that's good. I wonder how does the Board feel about, I think it's great that you tell, you know, obviously, our lead negotiator, but I am interested in knowing, you know, what parts that Chase likes, too. And I'm wondering if we should maybe make it an agenda item where we are able to discuss the host agreements and maybe collectively, four or five of us say, we really like this.
A chart, like we do on other things. Yeah, I like that idea.
We can add that to the next meeting agenda?
Right.
Want to bring back your comments?
And then we can all come with our ideas, because otherwise, we'd have an open meeting violation, and I'm curious what everybody else likes.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's, sounds fair.
Okay.
Sounds good. We did have a ruling, and I think it's in the packet from the Attorney, that the actual negotiations are not protected in executive session. So final, final Board deliberations have to be public, but since there's no committee established at the negotiation level, those will be.
Public?
Off-site, or, you know, protected.
Oh.
Okay. But when it gets to you all, it is open meeting. It is an open conversation.
Right. Well, I'm happy that the negotiation process at least is protected, so.
Yes.
You know. Chase, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Last question on that. That, what we have in our packet tonight from that Attorney, was that the same Attorney that was here for that?
And, yes. But she and Joel.
Checked with other Attorney.
Yeah, really her and Joel worked on that together, and I verified with Joel that that was a collaborative.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike, do you have any comments?
Yeah. The, the policy grants the, the lead negotiator, which is the Town Administrator, according to the policy, the, the formation of a working group type of thing, you know, with department heads and so forth. But these meetings aren't necessarily open to the public.
No.
I think that's advantageous, because if it is, then.
Yeah.
I totally agree.
It may not even be a committee meeting.
Confidential information about the business could be divulged to the competing applicant.
So what's going to happen is.
Also, it might jeopardize the town's interest if, you know.
Right. So, right. So the policy outlines the basic, we're going to ask you, we're going to ask you, vendor, this is the information we want in the host community agreement upfront, the initial proposal. You're going to submit that, and then the lead negotiator's going to look at that and gather resources from the different departments on a response and a, in the full negotiation.
Does, is, is all of the work product given to Town Council or something, so it's, okay, so it's not public record?
Right.
Okay. Just asking.
I understand.
Is everybody, so are we going to put it as an agenda item for our next meeting in two weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the plan? Is everybody, I think it's nice, to the extent you know, are you planning on being here in two weeks, everybody? Not vacation or, okay, because I think it's, would be nice to have a full board.
Yeah, of course.
Of course.
When do we expect to, I'm not sure who to ask this to, when do we expect to discuss our thoughts as to where this is going to go, or are we going to be, are the thoughts going to be suggested to us as to where it's going to go?
What do you mean, where it's going to go?
Like, for example, well, I'm going to use Heal, because that's already been out there. And are we going to be able to give our input as to what we think about Heal and whether we think that the agreement should be let go now and go into retail right now? Or is it going to come to us in the form of a suggestion that says, the suggestion is, you do A, B, and C. You put this, this particular, you give it to Heal and you give it to this other place, or you don't give it to Heal and you give it to these other two. Are we going to have any input in that?
Well, I think at your next meeting, I think you can provide some input on that.
We can.
I would, I wouldn't really pick a vendor at this point.
Well, I'm not picking a vendor. I'm going by location.
I understand.
I'm not going by vendor. I'm going by location, other than Heal.
Right.
And the only reason I'm using Heal is because we've got that agreement where they're medical, but then they have the right to do retail. So that's the only reason I'm using their name.
Mm-hmm.
That's just my, so, so am I hearing that the next time we're also going to give the pluses and minuses on what we think the different areas are?
I would say not. I think what we would look for is what you're looking for in a retailer, generalized.
Okay, but what about location? My concern is location, because I've been getting a lot of feedback from people.
I think that's legit. Okay, hold, I've got to.
I would ask that you, you come to me offline and tell me what the concerns are.
Okay.
When we, when we go to vote on this, is it going to be like what we just did with the Planning Board, where you recommend?
That's what my kind of was.
Said personally. I'm just trying to clarify it in a little different way.
Yeah.
What's it going to be like when we hired the incoming Town Administrator and we all voted and then crossed off?
Well, let me, let me ask you how you want to do this, because we could bring you four negotiated host community agreements, and you can pick which two you want.
I'd like to do it that way.
Okay.
As, and I'm leaning that way as well. As opposed to what?
As opposed to us bringing you two, which are recommended. Now, we could bring you four with two that are recommended, but you can pick from all four.
I want everybody's opinion on that. I already know how Chase feels.
And I want the location with it, too.
Well, the location will go hand in hand with the retailer.
Of course.
Because they're already tied into certain locations, my understanding.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't bring you someone, someone that didn't have a location.
Now, I know there's one location. It's that other one that I'm not sure. That is, the last time I knew, there was one that was looked at at Napoli's Plaza. I say Napoli's, but it's Fisk Hill Plaza. That's one. The other one was Paletti's area. Am I right, Paletti?
That's right.
Where's the last one? Because my understanding is they moved, they changed a couple or three times. Where is their final location? Is it the one on where the old Extramart was on one, on Route twenty?
No, three sixty-five Main Street, which is the old Lowell Station down here that Mr. Malone.
Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
By the Welcome to Sturbridge sign.
On Route twenty.
Correct.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. By the trailer park?
Yes.
Okay, all right, fine, great, thanks.
Mike, how do you feel about being presented for host agreements with a recommendation on two, in terms of the process that we use to issue the license?
Well, that, you know, I, I don't really know how else we could do it. I mean, it's, I mean, and, you know, keep the, the process, you know, some integrity in the process. It's got to, it's got to be that way. And, and then.
That's fine.
Then we can discuss the, the two that are recommended. If one of them isn't, isn't acceptable, we can look at some, go back and ask the negotiator to take a look at one of the others. That's.
Okay, so I do think we have consensus that we want to see all four, because the, the idea of only being presented two, we have nothing to compare it to. We vote one of it down, one of them down, and then another host agreement of another applicant, and we decide, well, that was actually better than.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to make an educated decision if we don't see all four host agreements. So.
Okay.
And with the recommendation, absolutely. You know, I'd like to know how our Town Administrator and Planner feel, but I think it's important, if the Selectmen have any meaningful role, that we see all four, too.
Okay.
All right, great. Are we ready to make a motion to approve the policy presented on the selection of a host agreement for the marijuana facility, facilities? You want a motion for us to approve the policy, I assume?
Yes, adopt the policy.
Adopt the policy. Anybody ready tonight, or do you want more time to review it?
I don't know.
I mean, it'd be nice, I guess, if we discussed at our next meeting, the open meeting things we wanted to add.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then adopt it after that, I think.
That sounds fair, because we're going to discuss it anyway. So, we're going to.
Okay.
Kind of table it until our next meeting, and when we discuss what we like and don't like about the sample host agreements, we will again review the policy and make and adopt it either as is or as amended.
So you want a motion to table it?
Sure.
Make a motion then to table the policy for marijuana establishment to eight, August nineteenth?
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor? Four zero.
Yeah.
Can I just add, I'm on vacation that week, so if any of you need anything prior to that, for me, if you'd like myself or Jeff now, because I'll be sure to prepare that.
You're going on vacation?
I won't be coming back for me, for that.
Why? I thought you were going to say, "I won't be coming back." I didn't know more words were coming after. I'm like, wait, what? Good for you. Enjoy yourself.
So how about if we come up to you?
Sure.
Good. Awesome. It was very well written, though. Provide some input. And Mary will be here, and I think it's good if, you know, the full board votes on the policy. It's kind of important, so. Anything else on that? Do you have anything to add, Jean, at this point?
No.
All right. Do you have something else?
Yes.
We have one more item on our. Hold on. That's my cover. Page, my agenda on it. Here we go. Oh, the parcel of land at five oh one Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do one of you want to provide an overview for us, Jeff?
Yes. Board of Selectmen were interested in running an RFP for potential parking areas on Route twenty. We solicited the RFP. One response was received at five oh one Main Street. It was, there was a, a rating of the proposal, and as you can see, it received twenty-two out of twenty-five possible points. The site would provide twenty-eight parking spaces. Their price would be two sixty-four as a vacant piece of land. And we would recommend moving forward with our diligence period and accepting the proposal. This would have to go to town meeting for final purchase, but it does achieve the goals of providing additional parking in that corridor.
Questions on this? Priscilla?
Yeah, I have some concerns about this. I've, I've got a couple. One is that I know we need parking, but there's not much sidewalk there, and I'm not sure if we park cars there, where they're going to go to, where they're going to walk to at that end of town. I would like to see a developer look at that area and bring a tax revenue option back. And that, that would include some parking, but that would bring back money into town as opposed to taking it off the roster. I also think that we should be looking at this at an annual town meeting, not a special town meeting. Special town meetings have about fifty people, if you're lucky, on a good day. And the annual at least has twice to three times that. I think this is a big purchase, and if you recall, the town was not too happy to even consider buying the house next door to the Town Hall. That went down. And so I think if we're going to look at something like this, I think this should go to an annual town meeting, at the very least.
Okay.
Chase, is that everything?
Yes.
Chase?
I'm, I'm happy with it. I, for me, I agree that right now it's maybe not as a desirable location as far as walking and things, but for me, it's more about the future. And I think down the road, when we have a Route twenty revitalization project and we can really clean up that area and the senior center's struggling with parking, I just think it's a valuable piece of real estate that the town, it's potentially a good price, and I'm okay with moving forward.
Mike?
Yeah, I, just on, you know, basic procedure, I, it's, it's good that we have a proposal, but I don't know if the Selectmen can officially accept the proposal without going to town meeting and getting appropriation and, you know, and I looked at the purchase and sales agreement. I didn't see anything that it was subject to appropriation, so I can't vote at this time.
Well, we're not asking for.
This is just a go-to-town meeting, though, correct?
Oh, so it's just, so.
This is just accepting the proposal. You would not be agreeing to a sales agreement this evening. It's a draft.
Right.
Sales agreement.
But this is for special town meeting, correct?
We anticipated it going to the, to the special town meeting. If the Board wants it to go to a, a regular town meeting, we would ask the property owner if he's willing to wait. That's.
Go ahead, Mike.
Whether, yeah, whether it, it goes to a special or annual town meeting, I, you know, but to say we accept the proposal where there's no appropriation, I, you know, I've, in the past, I've had an issue with that. And, you know, so I can't vote in favor of it at this time to accept it. We can vote to place it at town meeting at the appropriate time.
Mm-hmm.
But, and, and we can tell the developer that, that the Selectmen voted, you know, it's intent to place the article on a town meeting. I don't, you know, and I guess that could be argued in the future, whether it goes to the special town meeting or annual.
I think that has to be decided now, doesn't it?
I think the developer would be interested in the timeline.
Because that's, yeah, because that's what this says. This says for its forthcoming town meeting. I'm just thinking that we have to, I, am I wrong in thinking that we have to kind of say yea or nay to the special town meeting tonight?
I think it would be, I think that the owner of the property would like to know what his timeframe is.
Would want a clear message.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Jean, go ahead.
My pages are numbered differently than yours, because I printed my own version. But on page three of nine of the purchase and sale agreement, under fourteen buyers' contingencies, it does say, buyer obtaining favorable load of Sturbridge Town Meeting, authorizing the acquisition of the premises for consideration, and upon the terms set forth in this agreement, inappropriate funds for that purpose. So it is in the.
Rider.
Draft purchase and sale agreement that it is contingent upon town meeting approval and funding.
And compliance with thirty-B, which I was, at this point, I don't know if we're in full compliance with thirty-B to accept it.
We, Town Council advised me every step of the way, so I'm hoping that we are in compliance with thirty-B.
Okay, I guess I'll give my input now. I, I do think it's reasonable that the owner of the property would want to know, A, whether we're agreeing to a special town meeting, or B, the Board of Selectmen's druthers is to put it off to annual town meeting. I mean, that, that's a difference of like six months. So I, I think that's reasonable that they should know. I support it personally. I, you know, to me, it looked, it looks like a reasonable amount of money. I don't know if the Board wants to, you know, inquire of the assessor, who's more familiar with the market value of properties in town, if that, if she considers it a fair price. But to me, it looked like a fair price, and we are in need of a parking lot. But I also think that, I can appreciate what everybody said, Mike, that he doesn't feel in a position. But I do think that whether we put it on the special town meeting or the annual town meeting, the Board really should do more than place. I mean, we should either make a recommendation, yes or no, because we are, we're the ones that entertained the proposal to start with. So I also think it's fair for the, you know, sellers to know, are we just placing it and not supporting it, or, and I'm not saying you have to know tonight, but are we placing it and supporting it? Because to a certain extent, you know, voters make their own decision, but they're also going to look to us. And if we're placing something and then we don't even recommend it, it, it doesn't really have a bright future. So I think that we should, at some point, know. If you don't know tonight, I don't want to put people on the spot, but I think we should make a, you know, a public motion and either support it or not. Now, hold on, then I'll definitely.
Okay, thank you.
I always struggle with the special town meeting, annual town meeting. I can see the pros and cons of both ways. I've heard different people on Fincom say, "You can't hold up the business of the town if people want to go or not. We don't have a good turnout," as Priscilla pointed out. At the same time, we voted in, you know, Burgess at a special town meeting, and that was probably our biggest expenditure and the biggest crowd that we've had in years. So I think if you're interested, you go to the, to the meeting. Sometimes special town meetings in the fall, it's not even the nice weather yet. That happens in June. So, you know, personally, after, I would support this, and I would also support it going forward at, at special town meeting. But that's me. Go ahead.
When we were offered the house next door, whichever way next door is here, next door, we had a bidding war. We had a negotiation. Okay, let's ask them what better price can be. And now we're hearing a price, and we're, I'm hearing that we're almost, and we're accepting this. Why, in my opinion, are we not treating this seller as we treated as we treated that one? Okay? We said, they came in at one price, and we said, nope, it's too high. We want to renegotiate. And then they came back and they gave us another price that was maybe $50,000 less. But here, we're looking at one number, and we're not talking about, well, can you better the offer? I mean, this is the taxpayers' money we're looking at spending, and I think we are very remis. I'm personally going to say that. I feel we're very remiss if we don't get into some kind of negotiation with this. We're just going to jump at his request for his offer? Sure, I'm going to ask you whatever I want to sell it for, but we are supposed to be watching the taxpayer's pocketbook. And I don't think we're fair if we don't say to him, how much better can this be? That's where I'm at. So I won't support this for that reason. Because I remember, you were here.
I was.
You remember, I don't remember if Michael was here or not. I think he, I'm not sure.
And it was also discussed in executive session.
It was because it was a sale.
Right, right.
And we went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And until, and even at that, and then we brought the final number to the town, to the townspeople. Now we're giving first bid, $264,000, $264,000, without us negotiating. I don't think that's fair to the town.
Uh, Chase?
I was not on the board when the bidding went on next door, so that's good to know that there was negotiation. But I see, we asked about the assessor. The assessor did give her report, and is, am I reading this correctly? Were the buildings evaluated at $296,000? And they're asking $264,000? So they're willing to sell to the town for $30,000, $34,000 less than fair market value?
So was the.
Being a clean site.
With it being a clean site.
So was the house next door.
I'm sorry, I missed the assessment, yeah.
But the house next door was assessed far higher than they were offering it to us for. They were giving it to us as a deal, and we still negotiated with them.
Right. I follow what you're saying. I don't know if this makes a difference or not, but one of the differences is we sent this out, request for, request for a quote, which was not the same process we used with selling that. And I don't think when we send it out to request for a quote, when we've ever taken the lowest, in this case, the only bidder, we've taken the lowest bidder and tried to get them lower, we just award it. So the process, I don't know, is a little different than the house. Uh, Jean, do you want to?
Can't we negotiate, Jean? In light with Mary, what she just, if I may, can't we negotiate?
So when you put out a request for proposals, you're asking for the property to meet a certain set of criteria, which was contained in the RFP, and then you're asking for a sealed price proposal, which they've provided. If you had a situation where you had multiple proposals meeting the same criteria, then it might be possible, if you believed one site were more advantageous than another, to try to open up negotiations. Or I'll give you kind of another example. When we put out an RFP for the master plan proposals, the person selected that met the criteria most closely, when we opened the sealed price proposal, they were beyond our budget because we already had a sum from town meeting. So the board authorized me to negotiate with them, and I was able to get the price down. But when it's a real estate transaction, you've put out a set of criteria. We were looking for a piece of land that would meet this criteria, and we asked them to give us a sale price. With the property next door, I believe that it was going on the market, and they were approached by us to see if we could purchase it. So it was more on a one-on-one negotiations with the Board of Selectmen. So there was a difference in the process we were using.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I would also like to see a fair market appraisal because looking at the land alone, because we're not interested in the buildings. We need, we want land. And the land value is $79,600. So for our, for the public purpose use of this parcel, I don't know if it's, it's a third of an acre for $250,000, $260,000?
Comes to $9,400 plus parking space.
Yeah. So I, you know, I, one of the things under 30B is you have to, you would have to have an appraisal done. So without an appraisal, I don't know. It just seems like the price is high for the land only. The buildings, well, they are what they are. But for a parcel of land that size, that seems, could, just looking at the data that I have in front of me, and I think it's, my gut feeling is worth a lot more than $79,600, but I'm not an appraiser, so I'd have to know using, you know, accepted appraisal methods what the value of the property is before I, you know, before I could support it at town meeting.
I'm going to.
That's my issue, is that under 30B, I think you have to get an appraisal as well.
Okay. I'm going to make one motion for clarity because I know it's going to get defeated, but just gives the seller an idea of where the board stands. And then I'm going to make another one that I hope might get supported. So I'm going to make a motion to support the purchase of 308 Main Street to be presented at special town meeting.
308 or 501?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
501.
501.
Yeah, let's sell the town hall.
That would be.
Where there's a motion made. Let us go back to town council and see what the avenues are.
Okay, well, I was going to make one motion that's going to get defeated, but I think it's important that we've had so much input. I want them to know where the boards, how the board feels. And then I would make another one where I'm going to suggest that we authorize you to negotiate a price if permitted by, permitted to do so, and maybe that will get supported. So my first motion is, I make a motion that the Board of Selectmen support the purchase for $264,000, 508 Main Street, to be presented to town meeting by a warrant article at special town meeting. That's my motion. Anybody want to second it? Okay, defeated. Okay, and my second motion is that we authorize our town administrator to approach the bidder in this case with respect to the sale price, if permitted to do so, by law.
So.
All in favor?
Wait, wait, one minute before you go.
Out, discussion?
To approach the bidder, and then just, just to see if we can approach the bidder for, it's not going to any town meeting or anything, just to approach.
On the sale price and any other. Negotiate the sale price. And to, and I said as permitted by law because to make sure we can't do that when we already put out a request for a bid like this. I think we can, but I don't, actually don't know.
Do we have money available to have an appraisal done?
I don't know.
What?
We can find out.
Because I, I'd be curious what that number was.
Raw land is always going to be cheaper than land with improvements.
Yeah.
But the owner of the property has improvements on it.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to pay for that. And you're going to pay him to take it down. Regardless of, you're not going to get to $79,000 for raw land because that's not, that's not going to happen.
I agree. I said that, you know, my gut feeling is a lot higher than that, but I don't know what the appraised value for the intended use or the best use for the property would be.
Go ahead, Priscilla.
No, so your motion is to authorize the TA to approach the bidder for a sale price if allowed?
If allowed.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, they make, they might budge or they might say no. But it's good to know, and. So any more discussion? All in favor? Four zero.
So it's not, yeah, just keep working on it.
All right.
We'll see what happens. And we have the oil, we walked in the oil and.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Propane bids. Thank you, Jean.
It's the last thing on the agenda, right?
There should be a, something on the podium this evening with a spreadsheet on oil, propane bids. We bid this through CMRPC, as we normally do every year. You can see by the memo that Barbara put together, there is an overall slight, savings based upon last year's consumption of $147 between the two items for the year. So overall, it's a wash between the propane and the oil and what we're currently paying. Who would ask that you accept the bids? Propane is coming from, the oil is coming from Peterson Oil, and Feral Gas is providing the propane.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the bids? Almost. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Okay. Correspondents, Mike?
Oh.
Is that the next thing? Old business, new business?
No, oh, yeah.
Okay, Priscilla, any old business?
Um, I do. The house that was demolished at, that Nelson was talking about for quite a long time, did the owner take that down or did the town pay for that?
The owner took it down.
The owner took it down?
I don't believe, I've not seen where we have taken it down or authorized payment for that, so I would say.
Because I know he wanted that $75,000 to demolish that building ultimately, and he couldn't get the owner to do anything. Okay.
Let me check, what's the address?
Seven Main, I think it is.
Seven Main. I'll check on that.
Okay. And the other thing is, it seems like there's been a lot of power outages in town not related to storms. It just seems like every week, there's an outage somewhere, and it's not an accident, and it's not a storm. Are the wires old is the, I mean, I don't know. Can we get National Grid to kind of look around town? It just seems too much without weather related.
I understand. And I can ask National Grid to come to a meeting and kind of talk about it.
Okay. That'd be great.
And I don't know what's, I don't know what you've seen before, so.
Not as much.
I'm just forwarding you what I get from an email.
And I'm glad, no, we've, we used to see those too, but it just seems like there's too much lately. And again, I mean, if we had storm after storm after storm, there's nothing you can say. But because it's a beautiful day, and then you have people in a certain part of town, they're out of power, and it's like, without a car accident or any kind of accident, it's not, doesn't make sense to me. Thanks.
Can I add, maybe if you do have a representative come forward, they can have a record of the last year of the amount of power outages in Sturbridge?
That'd be good.
Because we can't keep track.
No, and it may just be, there's a whole crux of them at one time, and it may not be as bad as it seems to be, but it's not bad.
Well, they should have a record of that anyway.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
We can, we'll.
Any more, Chase?
I have nothing under all.
Okay. And I just want to thank the volunteers at the Pan MASH Challenge, our police department, and our emergency, I forget what they call the.
Cert team.
Cert team. They had to, I do know members of the cert team, and they reported at like 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, and they worked on Friday and Saturday. So I want to thank everybody for making it successful. That's my only old business. Oh, I did have one more. The study that was done Memorial Day for Fakra Road, I forgot, what is the status of that? What's the next step in that whole process now that we did the study?
We can revisit that.
Okay, and then, I thought that was like the first step to contacting ways to not send traffic that way, but I didn't know.
And 18-wheelers?
Right, and I know we got the numbers.
And they're high.
They're high. I thought they'd be even high. I think sometimes they're even higher than they were at that time, but, I didn't know like what the next step was for that neighborhood.
We'll revisit that and put that back.
Can we revisit 18-wheelers going up and down that road?
Sure.
Please. Thanks. I don't have any more old.
Did the, did the traffic data indicate that there was a lot of truck traffic? I didn't.
Not truck, just traffic, but.
Yeah, traffic, but not trucks.
You need to visit the road anytime during the day, especially also at night. You'll hear them going down the road, barreling down the road at 11 o'clock at night, 18-wheelers. They come up during the day, they go down during the day. All day, every day, every day.
Okay, new business, Priscilla?
Yes. Andrea, on the, I know we're doing two-sided, and that makes sense, but you know when it changes to a new topic? Can that stay? Can that be its own first page? In other words.
Bring it down?
No, you know, like, hang on a second, I'll tell you. Like, if you look at page 161, it has thanking all the volunteers, and then on 162, it's the minutes.
Yeah, where the, where the topics break.
Where the topic changes. Can that be its.
A front page, not a back page.
Yeah, because sometimes what happens is, when you're looking through this, you want to pull out certain things that you want to bring to the front. But you're on the backside of that, there's something else you need for another piece of it. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Just separate? I know, we'll figure it out.
You know what, yeah, thanks. Okay, that's it, thanks. Thank you.
No problem.
Once he explains it to you. That's it, man.
Yeah, that's, go ahead, Chase.
I have no new bu, business.
Okay, and I don't have any new business either. Correspondents?
Correspondents.
Oh, are we, I'm sorry, meeting minutes, what's next?
No.
Correspondents, yeah. The July 11th, we received a letter from Charter Communications regarding Channel 189, it's being repurposed from WUNI to W, to a different rebranding and to Bounce TV, I guess, or something like that. And we also got another letter from Charter Communications on July 19th, and there's several upcoming changes to the lineup. The, on October, August 21st, there'll be some changes. GEMHD will be added to the Expanded Basic. Charter Communications will launch FET, Family Entertainment Television on Expanded Basic. And you can go to www.spectrum.com/channels to see what the new lineup's going to be about. And on July 25th, we received a letter from Pastor Matt Zimmerman of Long Life Song Church. And what's this regarding? There's, oh, we sent a letter. I guess.
We did.
And it, we sent a letter to Life Song Church, person, thanking them. And I believe that was as a result of Selectman Kowinski's request. And everyone did a great job on the efforts to clean up along Route 15. And it's a real nice letter, and thank Life Song Church for their engagement in our community. And that's it for correspondence.
Okay. Meeting minutes of July? What date was that?
15th.
15th, changes?
On, let's see. Um, on, let's see. On the very top of page 163, the, the first paragraph should end, explaining that he is training for intervention procedures certification, rather than certified.
Can you, what's the page on the bottom right?
There is no page, so it's the, it's the second page of the minutes. Page, page two of the minutes. Very top, the last word, rather than certified, and that first paragraph should be certification, I believe. On page three, I, I could be wrong, but in, in, under the police department report, oh, about halfway through it, it's talking about Chief Ford, and it says, "He stated that the high volume of calls are the result of any abandoned calls," and I think it probably should be many, rather than any.
Okay.
With an M in front of it. And, nothing on that page. Oh, on, on the final page, on the July 1st, 2019 minutes vote, I believe I abstained from that vote, because I don't think I was here on July 1st, so it would be 4-0-1. Selectment's supranote abstained. And that's all my-
You were, I thought you were here.
Hmm?
I thought you were here.
On the first?
Yeah.
Oh.
The first minutes, right?
Was I?
Yeah, you were.
Oh, okay. I had, boy, I had-
So I won't change that?
Quadruple bypass, and then came, yeah, okay.
I keep an attendance sheet, you know?
Okay, okay, yeah. I'll, I'll withdraw that change then.
Okay.
Priscilla, are Chase's changes?
No.
Okay, I just have the couple.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I didn't email it to you, I got busy and, okay, so halfway down on the special one-day liquor license, it says, "Vice Chair Dowling stated she understood that, but the town is not enforcing it." Cross out, "The town is not enforcing it," and insert, "But that," oh, you know where I am yet? Page 163, like literally halfway through the discussion of the one-day liquor license for the common.
Oh.
Halfway down, it says, "Vice Chair Dowling stated she understood that."
Okay.
You see it?
Yeah.
Okay, "But," cross out, "The town is not enforcing it," and insert, "But that is different than the town taking an active role by issuing a license." Okay, and then I just have one other change. Almost towards the fourth or fifth line from the bottom, "Vice Chair Dowling requested that the board create an agenda item for a future meeting to adopt a policy." Okay, now cross out from "in terms of if," all the way to halfway through the next line, "limit of vendors would be," so, so cross out that, and insert, "A policy including, comma, the maximum number of vendors at one concert, comma, the limit on the number of beers sold to one person, comma," and now pick up what you said, and how the board would go about that approval process.
Okay, do you have notes on this?
Yeah, I'll just give it to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, do we have a motion to approve as amended?
Some moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Motion to adjourn?
We get executive session.
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so we, um, do you have the motion for the executive session?
Okay, is it in the me-
Usually.
Says on the gen-
On the agenda.
On the agenda?
Well, it's not a motion, it just says the reason.
Yeah, is it there? I just don't-
Executive session, "To discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigating position as the chair so declares."
So declared. Is there a second to that motion?
Can we not return to an open session?
And not to-
And not to return to open session.
Open session.
Second.
Okay, how do you vote, Priscilla?
Yes.
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 And I'm going to abstain and recuse myself.
And I would ask that Chief Grasso be invited to this executive session.
As amended. How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
I will abstain again. Okay.
You have, you have, Mary, abstain, we still have enough.
Yes, you have three.
Three.
I made sure when I told the, the town administrator that, though.
Something went on the floor there that came rolling.
I know, my pen popped.
Oh, your pen popped.